...tonight to run this meeting in an orderly fashion, so everything will go through, I believe. We would like to, can we get a quick draw of hands just for the people that are here from Fairfield? President? Thank you.
Okay, welcome everyone. We're going to keep this meeting right on task. This is a regularly scheduled Select Board meeting, so we have to stick to the time so our Select Board can move on with their business for the end of the evening. There is an agenda being passed around. We welcome everybody, but we're going to take priority of hearing from Fairfield residents, where there's time to hear from others. There's five things to keep in mind tonight. All comments that are made are to be directed at me, the moderator. Each speaker must wait to speak until they are recognized by me, the moderator. Each person who does speak has three minutes to speak except for the designated folks on the agenda. Comments will switch between alternating views, and I will make that call as to how we determine alternating views. Finally, a person will be allowed to speak only once before they are allowed to speak again until all others have been heard, and as I just said, we're going to give priority to Fairfield residents. So again, we welcome you all, but we're going to give priority to hearing from Fairfield residents. First off in the agenda, fifteen minutes, we're going to hear a presentation by Swan Wind.
My name is Ashley Colliot. My husband Travis, who I am, are preparing to seek the permits for the Swan Wind project. We are from Swan and our families live here, and we have deep roots and ties to the community. This project is literally in our backyard. We live only a couple hundred feet from the house closest to the project and a home built by my father-in-law. I'm a real estate agent and Travis is a builder who's helped many families buy affordable housing and locate the region. So we, like all of you, really care about the health of our community, and for that reason, we hired a team of experts led by representatives from Vermont, engineering and environmental consulting companies, to make sure that this project is done right. So we thank everyone for being here this evening, and I'm going to pass it on to Anthony.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. My name is Anthony Arupino. I work with fine folks at Beer Renewables out of Waterbury, Vermont, and we really appreciate the opportunity to come to Fairfield tonight. Many of you may know that the date by which we could have already filed now for Public Service Board Certificate of Public Good approval is passed, but we are slowing down so that we can have thoughtful dialogues like the one that we hope to have with you tonight. So we appreciate the time on the agenda and the time that you all have come to spend here with us tonight, and it's kind of sad timing that we would be having this discussion tonight, because anyone who's paying attention to the news can probably hear echoes of our Vermont experience from Tropical Storm Irene with what's happening in communities all up and down the eastern seaboard with the historical levels of flooding that they're experiencing in other states, and of course, you know, California is in a historic drought, and most of the west is on fire in unprecedented ways. And the massive consensus of the scientific community is that all of this extreme weather, all of this extreme drought, and of course, this is just what we're experiencing here in our country, has a lot to do with the fact that we are putting too much carbon dioxide and too much greenhouse gas pollution into the atmosphere. Climate change is happening, it's getting worse, we need to act, and that's in part why our state has adopted a renewable energy goal of getting 90% of our energy from renewable sources by 2050. It's important for you all to know that we're part of a regional electric grid, and that regional grid is still dangerously dominated by fossil fuels, many of which come from outside of our region and are outside of our control, especially we're talking about natural gas, and that's contributing to climate change in a major way. And wind power can and is helping to reduce our reliance on fossil fuels in this region. Every time we drive our cars, every time we heat our house with oil or even wood unfortunately, whenever we're creating carbon dioxide, we're contributing to the problem. And improvements in electric car technology, improvements in the way we heat our homes with heat pumps, that is giving us an opportunity to help solve the problem. Wind power, renewable energy from the wind is part of that solution. So it's important to know that we can help climate change and increase our energy security in the region by building projects like Swan Wind, but it's also important for you to keep in mind that Vermont has the second lowest electricity rates in New England, and that even as more and more renewable power is being added to our grid from both solar and wind projects, we are experiencing lower rates in Vermont. So keep all that in mind as you hear more specific details about the project tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Martha Staskis, my colleague from Vera, to talk a little bit about the specifics of the project.
Thank you, folks. Thanks for having me, and thank you to this Westboard for allowing us to come and make this presentation. So Swan Wind is on approximately a couple hundred acres of land at around 900 feet in elevation. It will be, there'll be a road that will be six tenths of a mile up the hill, and then approximately 1.4 miles along the top of the ridge line. It's proposed to be up to seven wind turbines, which would be up to 20 megawatts total. And the reason I use those words "up to" is because there are different turbine manufacturers, there are different turbine models, and at this point, we don't know which turbine will be selected. So to sort of put this into comparison, turbines at other projects in the state of Vermont, some of them have 85-meter towers, some have 100-meter towers, some have 100-meter rotors, some have 112-meter rotors, so, and they operate under different wind regimes, and so we're talking to several turbine manufacturers, and in order to be able to evaluate the site from public safety and environmental perspectives, we use the sort of worst-case scenario, if you will. So we're modeling up to seven turbines and it would be up to 20 megawatts, and therefore the maximum height of the wind turbines would be up to 499 feet. The wind speed at the ridge line is estimated to be 6.5 meters per second, that's approximately 15 miles per hour. Permeating winds at the site are typically from the, the majority of the time, they're from the south-southeast, and it has another component of about 35% of the time from the west. So typically, it comes up from the, so I stepped back here. This is a locator map of the area, the dark lines are the towns, and this is the town of Fairfield over here, St. Albans, St. Albans City, and Swan is here. And the project is located in the southwest corner of Swan, and so typically, the winds will come from the south-southeast, or it'll have a westerly component. To this point, we have had environmental, so just to touch upon the number of evaluations that have been underway and data that's been gathered, we've had environmental biologists, ecologists, and wildlife professionals out in the field walking the project area and collecting data with respect to habit, natural habitat, to wildlife, excuse me, wildlife habitat, wetlands, deer wintering yard, and other rare, threatened, endangered species. We've also had archaeologists up along the site to do archaeological testing. We have a cultural assessment underway that's looked at the cultural resources that are in the area around the project. It'll look at three miles and ten, five miles and 10 miles out. We'll also do, or we are doing a visual assessment, and with that in mind, we have a firm out of Middlebury that prepared a photo simulation of what the seven turbines, of what seven turbines up to 499 feet will look like from the northern shore of Fairfield Pond, like in the perspective of the, from this area. We also have acoustic sound monitoring that was done. They put acoustic sound monitors out in four geographic locations, and then they take the ambient sound conditions, and then the turbine manufacturers provide turbine sound power, sound power levels, and they will model those together. All of this data will go into our petition and information that we've gathered from having these conversations with folks, with folks such as yourselves, and that data will go in and be evaluated by the Public Service Board.
Yeah, I wanted to say a few words because I know how important Fairfield Pond is to this community. We know and we've heard from you how many of you have worked so hard to keep the water quality, not just in Fairfield Pond, but also in Lake Champlain, which were part of that watershed. That's something I've spent a lot of my professional life working on, clean water issues, and it's important to understand that we've had success in Vermont at figuring out how to generate clean energy and protect clean water at the same time. Also important to understand, very little of this project area, Martha, if you want to point it out on the map, okay?
Yep.
Less than 5% of this project area is actually in the watershed of Fairfield Pond. And if people don't know what a watershed is, it's basically the area of land that drains toward a water body, okay? We're going to have less than 0.6 acres of new impervious in the Fairfield Pond watershed, and approximately two, give or take, acres in the watershed will be cleared. When we say cleared, that also doesn't mean that cleared for all time. If Martha, you want to show what it looks like over time when these projects start to grow back, much of the area that's initially cleared is allowed to re-vegetate, so that's important to understand.
Let me, I'm just going to stop you for a second to sort of show what it is we're talking about. This is put together a sample of what occurred at the Georgia Mountain Inn project down in Milton and Georgia. And so this is a picture of the construction of the access road to the top, and this is what it looks like yesterday. I took the picture yesterday. These top pictures were taken yesterday. This is the installation area between the two turbines. There's two turbines over in Georgia, and then there's two turbines in Milton, and this is the central laid-out area where the road comes up. This is what it looks like today, or yesterday. And then this is the 35-foot-wide road across the top of the ridge line between the turbines, and it's purposely designed for moving this crane. This crane has a track of 35 feet. It's the crane that's used to lift up the tower sections, and so after the installation of the project is completed, the pathway is reseated, is, um, yes, thank you, mult, it's re-vegetated, and what is left is the travel distance for a pickup truck. So I just thought I would give that as a sample of before and after.
Well, and the other context to keep in mind about this part-
Excuse me, would you mind turning that some forward?
Oh, I'm, yeah, sorry.
Probably did it on the other-
The other context to keep in mind about this 280 acres is it has long been a part of the working landscape. Before the Bliles owned this property, it was owned by a Canadian logging company and was logged very heavily by that company over many years. So in terms of keeping in perspective the amount of vegetation clearing that's going to occur, that's not a new phenomenon for the site, and what's proposed, scale-wise, is much less than historically has been, has been done on the land for logging and other working landscape activities. There's also a sugaring operation there that's going to continue to operate. But in terms of water quality, what I mentioned before is that there are bigger projects in the state. Sheffield is one of them, which, as you may know, is near Crystal Lake in Barton, which is a similar circumstance as this community, and the Agency of Natural Resources, both before that project was built, during its construction, and for years after its construction, have monitored water quality at five streams around that site to see how the stormwater control measures that were installed by the developers are doing at protecting water quality. And the good news is that there, and recent data from Kingdom Community Women, well, again, much bigger projects than what we're talking about here, we've learned how to engineer the landscape to make sure that the water that falls on the land is collected, directed to infiltration basins that allow them to filter out pollution, that store them, that allow water to seep back into the ground where that is appropriate, and so we've learned in this state how to generate clean energy and protect clean water. We know that's a priority for this community, it's a priority for the state right now, and so that is something that, those are lessons we've learned and that will be put into play in this project. Martha, do you want to just wrap up because we're very near topic?
No, I think we just did a bunch of-
Is there any place where this information is available?
So any, any of the information that we referenced this evening in terms of the studies that have been done at other wind projects, you can get in touch with us on our website, which is swantonwind.com. There is an email, you can send us emails with your questions, we'll do our best to answer those quickly. As you may know, the town of Fairfield also on its website has a number of documents that have been provided from Swan Wind, as well as people with other perspectives on the process, and we've asked that some additional documents be added to that to make sure that we have balanced information out there, so please be in touch with us.
Yeah, in the short term, I have an information sheet here that has the contact information and the website, if anyone didn't get one and would like one, please let me know. Thank you.
All right, we're now going to set aside 15 minutes for a question-and-answer period, and as I said, we gave priority to those questions posed by Fairfield residents to the Swan Wind project. I will ask that you speak from where you stand or sit. There are a few more chairs here, please feel free to come forward if you'd like a chair, and I'm going to ask you if you would give your name before we take your question. All right, who has a question? Person with the red shirt, your name?
Sana Ratner.
Fairfield, Fairfield resident?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
If 5% of the area is a Fairfield Pond watershed, in what watershed is the other 95% of the area?
It would be draining to, well, no, St. Albans.
Sorry, St. Albans.
St. Albans.
I'm going to ask you to hold your comments and let the question be answered.
So let me come close, because this is a hard master seat, but these green lines were, this is a map that's generated by Arrowood Environmental, who is the environmental ecologists that are doing the natural resource and water evaluation work, and they're working with the Agency of Natural Resources on all, on the environmental frontier. And so they prepared this plan, this map, and these green lines are the watershed areas that drain in different directions, and the project where it intersects with Fairfield that would go over to the, to the east is this one right here. The rest of the project components would go in these, there's one here, then there's another one here, then there's another one here, right, they would go in the western direction.
I want to just add to that answer, because we're not unmindful that in this part of the world, all of Lake Champlain is suffering from over pollution, okay? But when we say it drains in that direction, that doesn't mean that it is adding pollution to that part of the lake. And what I was referencing before, and the information that's available from the Agency of Natural Resources, you do not have to take our word for it, you can speak to the professionals who know that it is to represent the whole state. They have studied what is going on in other projects where water protection measures have been taken, similar to what would be required of this project, and what they are finding is that they're not adding pollution, and they're not affecting the aquatic communities in those wetlands and stream areas surrounding the project. So it's important to keep that perspective in mind.
Okay, gentleman in the green shirt, are you a Fairfield resident?
I am.
All right, your name, sir?
Mark, I live on Fairfield Pond.
Okay.
I have two questions. And for the board, this is a property line, correct Travis? Property line?
Yeah.
Yeah? So I have been trespassing twice on my sugar woods, that at lease, at a long-term lease, this whole area, don't you, see Travis? Isn't that part of the wetland study that you guys did? Yes, because, oh, no, you told me, I don't know anything about it, and at the, at the Swan Wind party, you know, the informational meeting, Martha, who was your-
Arrowood Environmental.
I asked Arrowood Environmental, why are you crossing boundaries? And he told me directly, we only go to where we were told to go, and it's all about this wetland delineation that I see up here. This whole area is not owned by the Bliles, and it's basically 2,000 feet from the boundary. So just let you know, all through my sugar woods, I have wetland delineation, and you said you went up and pulled flagging away.
That's right.
It's not, it's all, I can bring anyone up there-
Mr. Duvie has a point where I'm going to ask you to frame this in the form of a question.
Okay, so two things. One, I've seen trespassing on my sugar woods with wetland delineation, and it's still here on the map. They don't own that land.
That's a really, can I respond to that?
So hold on, I'm going to ask, this is formed in the form of questions, so are you asking for clarity about, let me make sure, are you asking for clarity about the boundary, what, is that the nature of-
No, I'm asking why would they trespass on someone else's land?
Okay.
And the other question is, I talked to John Zimmerman at that Swan Wind meeting, and there's no setbacks at all on these turbines. My tubing is going to be 40 feet from the turbine pad, so there's going to be a clear cut right to the boundary, because there's no setback, and I'm concerned about blowdowns and ice that's going to be thrown 1,500 feet, so those are my questions.
All right, so it sounds twofold, then first of all, the trespassing, and second, the setback, or the-
Yeah, is there any setback?
Can you, folks, address that?
First, I'd like to address the plan that you have on the left. That is a plan that was shared with the Agency of Natural Resources. It was not made public because it was a very early stage of trying to understand where the project would go. The main reason we don't, this is a perfect example of why we don't pass stuff around like that until we get to a point where we understand what's going on, because we needed to clarify where the boundaries were. I actually spoke with Brian Marcott, who is the property owner.
Correct.
Okay, and it's, it's, he owns the property, and we talked about the fact that there was an error, and we indicated that, and myself and my son actually went back out once as soon as we learned about it to take down those, those ribbons as we, as we could. So, you know, there was no intentional harm here to propose, and I apologize for the fact that they got put up, but this is an iterative process as you go through evaluating for any kind of development, quite honestly, right?
Do you want to take it?
Yeah, shut it back.
Was that an answer? Was that an answer?
I just addressed the-
Wait, is that ribbons are down?
No.
We have a question heading on, or we're going to hear from the gentleman, but also, all right, can you introduce yourself?
Yeah, my name is John Zimmerman. I am the principal of Vera, and setback question, Mark. The Public Service Board has established setback requirements for our wind turbines of 1.1 times the rotor diameter of the blade, so that means the blade will not overhang your adjoining property. It's not, whatever you said, 40 feet, that's-
You called that, we did that in 13 in the Swan. You, you got the scale out, you said the pad was going to be 40 feet from the boundary.
Well, if I did that, I did that in there when you were standing there, I know when I was talking, and when I was just mistook each other, that's okay, but it's 1.1 times the rotor, the length of a blade.
Next question. Person in the green shirt.
Hi, Fred Parks, Fairfield Pond. This wasn't my prepared question, but so far, very quickly in this question-and-answer period, what I've already heard a lot of is, sorry, we made an error. And, you know, oops, we have an error, sorry, Mark, oops, we have an error, sorry.
So as we all sit here tonight, I guess my question would be, just exactly how confident should we be that this project isn't going to be filtered because of the amount of errors that are part of the process? I've already, we've only been in this five minutes, and all I've heard is, sorry, that was an error on our part, we'll try not to let that happen again.
So the question is with regard to confidence due to the announcement of error that you've heard, can you answer that?
So the Public Service Board has strict regulatory powers over all of these projects. Everything that goes in has to be tested, every expert has to sit and give testimony sworn under oath, and that testimony can be challenged by other parties. By the way, that includes municipalities, municipalities do have a right to participate in these proceedings, and they're welcome to this proceeding. The contractors that work for the project are required to know what the conditions are, that they must abide by their penalties if they go awry from those conditions, but this is a heavily regulated, closely watched process that we haven't, just to understand, officially even begun yet. There is no application into the Public Service Board, there have been no hearings at the Public Service Board, so when that starts, when that begins, it's all going to be watched very closely, not just by the Public Service Board, but the State Agency of Natural Resources has authority over this, the State Transportation Agency, there are a number of regulatory agencies that watch very closely to make sure that the commitment of quality that I know that Swan Wind has is achieved, and that all state standards to protect public safety and public health are compliant.
All right, next question. Person in the black shirt, May Patnood, and a Fairfield resident, Fairfield Pond.
Yes, please come. So I'm wondering what kind of benefit Fairfield residents are going to get as far as electricity? Do we see any of the power coming to us, or do we just get all the negative?
The question is regarding benefit to Fairfield residents.
Yes, I can talk about the power. Power, we hope to be selling the power to reman utilities under existing Vermont regulations that allow us to do so, and in that sense, it will be distributed pro rata to all the utilities in the state, I think it's 718 of them right now. So the power will be sold under stable, long-term rates, that won't fluctuate with the variability of the market prices in the electric system, and that long-term stability will benefit all the, all day payers in the state.
So is there any else?
I want Sally Colapi, Fairfield Pond. Well, Chris Leach is a 20-year trustee for the town of Swan, who has been heavily involved in the operation of Swan Electric, and he states that Vermont does not need more electricity. There is no shortage or need to produce more now or in the foreseeable future. This project will not lower our home electrical bills or help to bring in industry. According, in Vermont, according to the ISO New England, is the fifth most expensive state in which to purchase electricity, however, the 49th in the individual amount of electricity used.
Ms. Colapi, I'm going to ask you a four-minute question.
Well, I thought we had three minutes.
In the, in the, period in which you can express your opinion, but I was going to ask this period-
So since the town of Swan, since the town of Swan, Green Mountain Power, Washington Electric, Burlington Electric, and the Public Service Department have all said this project is not wanted or needed, will you please drop it, and if not, why? You stated, Travis, that you were not in it for the money at the beginning. That is my question.
Ms. Colapi, was your, do you have a question?
Yes, I said, town of Swan, Green Mountain Power, Washington Electric, Burlington Electric, and the Public Service Department have all said this project is not wanted or needed, so will you please drop it, and if not, why?
If I can glean from that question, is there, is there will or interest in departing from or putting down this project? Can- Can Mr. Travis Blile speak to that?
Based, based on all the electric companies saying they don't want the project, we're asking.
I think what we would like to do by way of responses, talk about what is incorrect in terms of the characterization of the utilities, their position, and what the need for power is in the state of Vermont, the more renewable power, more power.
Well, I think so. The state itself has, in their planning process, acknowledged the increasing need for renewable sources of power. The fact that Burlington Electric would come out and make a statement that they don't want to buy power from this project or that project, that's, you know, that's their prerogative to say that. Uh, but that is not the same thing as saying, we don't need new sources of power. It's, we need new sources of power that perhaps we can build, is what it says to me.
Well, hydroelectric, we're, we're only doing 330 megawatts we used to do from hydroelectric. The legislature has now determined hydroelectric as a renewable energy. Right now, we're only getting 220 megawatts. So we could easily have 110 more megawatts of inexpensive baseload renewable energy at our fingertips on transmission lines already available. And the electric companies have asked the Public Service Board to dismiss this project. And we're wondering why those requests are not being honored.
Can you address that?
Well, there's a big, there's a, first of all, there are hydroelectric. This, this is about bigger than Swan Wind. This is bigger than, uh, um, wind power.
We're only talking about Swan Wind right now.
I understand that, but you were talking about what the electric utilities are saying.
Yep.
You might be interested to know that the electric utilities that are taking this position that you're citing with respect to Swan Wind are also taking this position with respect to independent hydro producers in the state of Vermont. The issue for the utilities is that they want to own and control all the modes of production of electricity because that's how they make the most money for their share payers. Green Mountain Power, for example. Gaz Metro is their parent company in Canada. This is a, what you are trying to, or what, what you are interpreting as their position about Swan Wind is really a bigger discussion about the power of monopolies versus independent producers and about what makes the most money for the utilities versus what the needs of the state are for renewable power. We know that past 2020, we don't have the amount of power we need to meet all our needs in the state. We know that the state has a goal in its comprehensive energy plan of getting to 25% electric plug-in vehicles. Okay, so that's to get our power for our cars without contributing. When we drive, we won't be contributing to climate change. We won't be contributing to foreign oil and all the blood that's involved with that will be stable.
You know, I'm going to cut you off there. The purpose of the question and answer session is really to get out as much information, questions and as much factual information. Both will have an opportunity to express their views in the next section of the meeting. So we're going to move on from this point and clear...
Perfect, perfect.
We're going to move on. Another question from the floor, so with the, the red flag shirt. Your name, are you a Fairfield resident?
Ken Fox, I'm a Fairfield resident. You were talking about the, um, your delay in terms of the petition to the Public Service Board. You remarked when you said for meetings like this, um, that you're still waiting for your study. How long a delay do you really think that is? Got any idea at all? I guess that's my question.
Question is that's, I'm going to...
We're still, we're still getting in some of the reports and, um, I would like to see, it's been a month, but we want to make sure it's done right. And that, and the input from here is as important as getting the reports from the Bliles and all the experts.
So you were going to ask, you didn't use the mic.
So we did really are trying to get it off of here.
Is there a deadline for that?
There, there, there isn't a dead, the deadline. So we did, for, just to give one example from people's perspective, the Regional Planning Commission, which the town of Fairfield is representing on, sent, uh, I think it was a six or seven-page letter with a number of very thoughtful questions. They want to know about water quality. They want to know about wetlands. They want to know about a range of different issues and economic issues. Some of which we are already in the process of answering, but some of which were thoughtful nuances on what we had already anticipated answered. So we want to reciprocate the effort that entities like the Planning Commission have undertaken to ask thoughtful questions. The purpose of the application to the Public Service Board is to try our best to answer as many of those questions at the beginning of the process as possible. But then there's also the Public Service Board process itself where additional questions and answers have to be met for the satisfaction of the board and other parties that come into it. So we're taking our time. It would be wrong to commit to an exact deadline when, you know, there are still thoughtful issues that need to be considered. And here we are tonight, maybe we'll hear some additional nuanced thoughtful, uh, issues that, that should be addressed.
So I understand this order, if you have a hand up, go ahead.
What was your deadline, December 31st? Is that the 16th, I got a credit?
Do you want to talk about federal tax credits?
They want to ask a question, this is one of our deadlines, December 31st.
No, we don't have that as a deadline per se. But Travis knows that this could go past that easily with the scrutiny that's being applied to the, to the project.
Can you explain what the relevance of the December 30th date?
Oh, uh, but to that, there's, uh, there's the federal production tax credit that act, that actually isn't in place right now. But there is legislation down in Washington that is trying to restore it under the federal tax initiatives. Uh, and in that case, if they do that, then that date would have some relevance. But it's not there now, so we don't really have it as a deadline as a progress.
So just, I think it's important to be a little bit clear about that. There is no federal production tax credit or subsidy, if you like, for a wind project like Swan Wind in existence today in law. And there being one again requires that Congress act on behalf of renewable energy. So I, I won't comment further on Congress, but you have to decide whether you think that might...
First one in the last letter, do you have a hand up?
Susan Seymour, I live on Fairfield Pond. I, um, have been doing a lot of research just because it's going to affect me directly. I spoke to you about this Martha when I went to the Georgia Mountain project a few weeks ago. I feel strongly about the shadow flicker issue. And, uh, for those who don't know what that means, it's just basically like a strobe light for epileptic people to always feel faint. So as a kayaker and somebody who's on the pond regularly, I'm very concerned about the shadow flicker, not just in people's homes, but also boats. And as far as on the other side, it's 105, Route 105. So I'm looking, I'm thinking, hey, I drive this every day. Millions of people drive this road every day. There's going to be huge shadow flicker. And when I was up at Georgia Mountain, I saw a huge shadow flicker that went all the way down to the valley, quite a few, you know, it wasn't just 30 feet or 40, you know, meters.
So it's a point where I'm going to ask you to frame it in a question. Are you asking about mitigation of that?
My question is, what is an appropriate amount of shadow flicker? That is, that is, you know, what's the amount of hours? That you anticipate shadow flicker for the pond and for the 105, two separate areas? What I read about in Wisconsin, that this affects animals? That cows die and that chickens lay shellless eggs. It's huge because there's two farms right there. So I'm very concerned about that and I don't feel like I'm going to get any results. So please make me feel better.
So it sounds like your question is, is this project anticipated or set forth at some sort of anticipatory sense of what amount of shadow flicker is going to occur?
What's the appropriate amount of shadow flicker that one should, a project should have? And what, what do you think the amount of hours are on both sides, the water and the road?
Because we don't know the turbine, okay? It hasn't been run. And I'm trying to figure if you can remember how much it was.
Well, modeling hasn't been done.
Hasn't been done.
But, you know, generically, this is something we pay close attention to. And in the other wind projects that have been approved by the board, they have reviewed the scientific literature on it worldwide, compared it to with our results here in this particular circuit area and have applied, I believe the standard, don't quote beyond this, is like the acceptable level is on the order of 20 to 30 hours per year is acceptable.
Is that per turbine or is that whole?
Just, that's...
Well, it happens.
You know, it, it will happen for the project. I mean, we don't start adding up 20 hours for each turbine, it's for the project.
20 hours for the year?
Yeah.
Actually, it's eight hours and that's what the New Hampshire standards are going to cite in their new policy.
Well, I'm not familiar with that.
But we don't know, is what you're saying.
It will be, it will be a whole section. Because the Public Service Board looks at public health and safety of a number, from a number of perspectives, shadow flicker will be a piece of that, uh, application.
But you can't tell me because you don't know how big they'll be?
I don't have, we haven't, the modeling hasn't been run. So I don't have an answer to give you, but I, I, that's why I was trying to think of what Georgia Mountain was on a annual basis.
We're going to move on and take one last question here and then we'll move into a section. Can we have an opportunity to express their views? The gentleman back there with the gray shirt had a question. Yes, hand up first. Go ahead, your name? Your name?
Louis Lacrosse.
And are you a Fairfield resident? Go ahead.
Fairfield, yes. Wind turbines collapse, catch fire, throw ice and throw blades. What does the Swan Wind consider to be a safe setback from neighboring property lines? This question was asked at the Swan and Sled Board meeting. We did not receive an answer. And for the same reason that I've just already heard today, that we were, we were told that the Gold Wind would be the turbine that was chosen. And I, I guess that is not the case. At the meeting in Swanton, Martha did say that the, uh, debris would fall straight to the ground, which, which videos show otherwise. And what are the requirements on local firefighters to deal with turbine fires? And what is the protocol for putting out a wind turbine that is on fire on the top of a mountain?
Safe setbacks and, um, fireman requirements. Can you address that?
This is in the realm of public safety and this was worked at really carefully in all the projects that we've been involved with so far. We are right now finalizing a study with one of our consultants on the risk of, uh, of ice throw and tower collapse. And it looks very similar to what we had done for our Georgia Mountain project. And that risk is very low. The setbacks that, uh, I, I talked to Mark about, uh, about the 1.1 times, uh, the radius of the rotor, uh, is an appropriate setback to protect neighboring properties to a reasonable amount. Uh, I don't have the exact statistics in front of me in terms of probability, but I do remember the Georgia Mountain, sir, do you have?
So, we, we are looking at this issue again because it's public health and safety. This is a question that will have to be answered in the final application and before the board will grant this, uh, a certification of public good. And the best available information our consultants could find in a, in the authoritative source, which was updated in 2014, estimates the expected risk of tower collapse to be 0.000058 turbines per year. Or equivalently, one in 17,000 years for any given turbine. Uh, the failure rates and impact zones, uh, are up to date as of 2014. Blade failure events, which I think is the other thing you were talking about, are also rare. And blade separation in whole or in part is rarer still due to the improvements in blade technology and turbine certification that have occurred. The, the calculated estimate based on all turbine installations worldwide have been reviewed, 0.0006 turbines per year or equivalently, one in every 1,600 years. The authors also observed that the overall blade failure rate has declined by a factor of three since, uh, the early 1990s. Uh, so you may have seen on YouTube, I know that someone posted it to the Swan Wind. There's a pretty sensational video from many years ago. It's either Denmark or, or Dutch where there was a, a turbine failure. And there's a lot of, a lot of the same videos of this one incident. Um, that is outdated technology, not what we're talking about here installing. So very low probability, um, of that occurring.
Do you have a protocol for?
The fire issue.
For the fire issue?
And setback.
I can tell you what is in place at Georgia Mountain and depending on the turbine manufacturer and the community fire department. That was established, uh, that the Milton Fire Department works in conjunction and communicates with the, it is a Gold Wind turbine. The Gold Wind manufacturer operates and maintains that facility in, in Georgia and Milton. And they have, uh, in fact, they're, I think it's in November, they're having a training to coordinate, um, a mock situation. So it would be in conjunction with the local, uh, fire department and the turbine manufacturer, um, as to the protocols that they would put in place.
I just have a couple more points to go directly to the question, so...
Very brief, sir.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So even in the rare event of blade filler in modern machines, that, that it's much more likely that the blade will may attach to the hub. And again, in the rare event, uh, that a piece or blade will become detached, the modeled, uh, limited, the modeled distance, maximum safe distance is 500 meters per blade.
Can I, um, can I get the, uh, I'm not real good at math, but if you give me the length of the blades and when I go home, I'll do the times 1.1 and I'll come up with how far the setback is. So what are the options on the length of the blades?
We can, I, we can, we can give you more of this information. We can send it to you.
Can you at least give us the range?
Length of the blades, what, what, so there was...
The longest rotor, we're looking at, or the longest rotor in diameter?
Yeah.
Is 121 meters right now.
Center, alright.
That's the diameter?
That's the diameter.
So the setback would be half of that.
So let's move on to this segment of the meeting where people can express their views. Again, we're going to ask you to speak for three minutes only and, uh, you're recognized by the moderator.
Can I, can I start?
Uh, Fairfield resident?
Yes.
And your name?
Yes, can somebody take this and make sure it gets recorded?
Can I just sit between? I just want to tell you how much trouble it is to run a well-organized meeting. And I do want to thank Vanessa right now.
Yes, thank you.
We all want to thank her. But I guess it can go horribly wrong if it does. I don't have her just in watching that. And we're in the line. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
And I totally understand it. I thank everybody for coming.
And your name?
Uh, my name is Bruce Collopie. I live on Fairfield Pond. My wife Sally and I have run the Lake, uh, Fairfield Pond Recreation Association for 15 years now. So of course, we have a lot of issues with this. But I'd like to start before I ask the board a question. I would like to start, anyone from Fairfield here that is going to be one mile or closer from the, from the turbine? About a mile. Anyone that's on Fairfield Pond is going to see it. That's all of you, so, okay? Uh, Swanton, there's a lot of people from Swanton that are going to be up anywhere from 2,000 feet away from them to a mile away. As any of you here, can I have your hands? Uh, I just like everyone that's not, that's, this is something new that you're just learning. These are going to be the victims of the industrial wind project here. Okay? They're, they're going to be within a certain boundary line that is actually going to cause issues for them from, from everything, from sound to, to, uh, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. Uh, everything from, everything that you can imagine that could happen that we've talked about already. All I want you to do is, everybody make sure you get yourself educated on really what is going on with these wind turbines and where they're coming from, what they're really going to do for us and what the cost is and stuff. And now I'd just like to ask you, kind of go over my question right here, sorry. I just, I'm not really good at talking. Okay. The test, this is a question. The town of Fairfield will have zero benefits, meaning Swanton is actually going to be receiving some money for, every year for these turbines being, Fairfield's not. What will, what will happen when the property values are reduced around the pond? It will require an increase in property tax rates to support the town budget. Does, does the town... Does, does the town of Fairfield support an industrial-scale wind project that is supposed to be seven, 500-foot, 499-foot foot turbine towering over beautiful Fairfield Pond, risking further impairment of an already impaired water body? Yes, it's only 5%, but I've been working really hard for the last 15 years to keep this, to keep this pond very clean. And dramatically altering the beauty, the landscape and the nature that drives there. For that, for that power, power that isn't needed or wanted and, and by the community, the community who has worked tirelessly to maintain water quality and to enforce the Shoreline Protection Act. So with the Shoreline Protection Act, we now have to, we have to be so stringent on our properties that anyone near the lake, that anything within 250 feet, we're not allowed to, we're not allowed to do anything without special permitting. Which will be, which will be a meaningless law if, if a big hill, rocky ridge is allowed to be gutted of its wetlands, bernal pools, beaver ponds.
In the interest of hearing from everyone, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up.
It is, and peatbox. These are, these are all those things that are on top, okay? This is a major source up here of all the.
All right, Mr. Colopy, would you like to use the remaining 15 seconds of your time for the select board to answer this question at the end of this, this opinion period?
I'm sorry, I got a little nervous.
So we'll, we'll give them 15, the remainder of his time to answer the question at the end of this opinion period. Next person to speak, does anyone have a view that is an alternative to Mr. Colopy's expressed, the, the views, not Mr. Colopy, but the views just expressed that we're not supportive of this project? Please feel free to speak. This is an open meeting.
This is for everybody?
Uh, no, we'd like to stick to the, giving Fairfield residents a priority for now. Okay, Ms. Morgan, you have three minutes.
It seems there's a lot of unanswered questions or errors about the environmental damage to the environment, pollution there. And the banking of our prime bridge line and destroying wild habitat. And putting it under the net, even though they say they're reseeding it or whatever, is still, has destroyed that beautiful wild habitat. And where are your turbines coming from? Are they locally in Vermont? Or is this the town?
Thank you for taking the time. Another person to speak. Person with the red shirt, are you a Fairfield resident?
Fairfield resident.
And your name?
Henry Doobie.
Ms. Doobie, please go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me from here?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the consultants for Swanton Wind have stated that the sound of a wind turbine is like a babbling brook or rustling leaves or a refrigerator. But that, that may be true if you are a mile away. But people on Georgia Mountain that live about 3,800 feet away describe the wind turbine sounds like a train or an airplane. The Chinese company Gold Wind makes the turbines that are used at Georgia Mountain. And they're also being considered, one of your considerations for, for Swanton Wind Project. The Gold Wind's website doesn't even list the noise decibels for their turbines on their website. But General Electric Wind Turbines does list the noise decibels for their 475-foot wind turbine. And, and that's 106 decibels or DBA. But my husband's chainsaw is rated at 109 DBAs. So some people say wind turbines are not that noisy, but that depends on how close you are. Swanton Wind proposes placing wind turbines less than 2,000 feet from the closest home. Even if you think the turbines won't affect you, is that what you really want for your neighbors? The World Health Organization says that noise levels that are greater than 30 DBA can interfere with sleep. Vermont Public Service Board says that the turbine noise outside your open bedroom window averaged over an hour should not exceed 45 DBA. That would allow a vacuum cleaner, which is 70 DBA, to start up every five minutes and still meet the standard. Is that what we really want for our neighbors that are living around the wind turbines? There is modern monitoring for compliance. Neighbors are given a phone number to call and if the, if the turbine noise gets too loud. But the problem is, no one answers the phone at night. It just goes to voicemail. A recent complaint at Georgia Mountain was answered by the turbine company saying, on the night in question, that she complained about the noise, that the turbines were running according to standards. End of discussion. In other words, it's all in your head. Is this what we really want for our neighbors?
Please do your own.
Is that three minutes? Okay. Um, wind turbines also put out low-frequency noise. And that can cause people living close to the turbines, chronic sleep disturbance, dizziness, ringing in your ears, heart palpitations, vibrations and pressure sensations in the head and the chest. Chronic sleep interruption and deprivation is acknowledged as a trigger.
Okay, we're going to have to hear from.
For health problems.
Thank you for taking the time. Next person to speak.
Good job.
Um, since we've heard from you in the past, we'll, we'll go to make our way back to you. Sir with the green hat, Fairfield resident, and your name?
Neil Moore.
Mr. Moore, go ahead.
It seems like from listening here that the first thing you do if you're going to do something like this is find out where your property lines are. I can't imagine that, how you get a permit from, from Austin. I'm not sure, but the same thing happened in Lowell. As long as, finally Green Mountain Power brought, brought them out, but it, that's not a very good way to start. Again, that's not competent. Let's see what the slight board says about, I don't know how much they have about permitting in Swanton, but it doesn't seem like it could start.
Next person. Comments? Does the person come back and see if there, if you're from someone who hasn't spoken?
I haven't spoken during this session yet.
All right. Fairfield resident? And your name?
Mr. Andy, I'm from Fairfield.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Andy.
Um, I expressed in one of my remarks at the Rev Conference that the three turbine sites Sheffield, Lowell and Georgia have been running either up to a standard which is like 30% or 23% or 25% or, you know, just right around where they should be. So effectively, they're running 30% of the time. So I want to know why, or how can you possibly? So if we had a refrigerator and it was plugged into this thing, in, in an hour's time, it'd only be cold for 20 minutes. If I was a farmer and 30% of the time in a 24-hour day, I'd only be able to milk eight hours. If I was in industry and was relying upon this stuff for a month, it'd only be 10 days I could run my factory. So none of this actually happens. So we're getting power from other sources, whether they like it or not. Because none of us, none of this happens. We have electricity all the time, but it's not from wind turbines. Because we have wind turbines, our power is not getting less. Coal-fired plants or any kind of fossil fuel, fuel plants are not being shut down. They are still going. The sacrifice I have to make for something that only runs 30% of the time, that's unreliable, undependable, is ridiculous. I have to look at these foolish things all the time. We live in the Green Mountain State, not the turbine state. We have people come here.
You're not being sweet.
People come here from all over the country to see our beautiful mountains, especially this time of year. How ugly are these things stuck up there? And to top it off, you know, where's the pride in Vermont people? I'm proud. I go someplace, they ask you where you're from. I'm from Vermont. They say, what a beautiful state. And you know, that, that's not it. It pollutes our waters. It ruins our habitat. And you know, there's all kinds of charts and surveys. I mean, it was for everything, whether it's the medical field or any field. There's two people that say it's good, there's two people that say it's bad. But, but the real life is, you look at it, I mean, just visually how bad it is. And you know, we shouldn't have to put up with that for 30% of the time of power that is being produced. It, it makes no sense. It's a very common sense thing and there's no sense at all to it. Thank you.
Next person. Views from anyone we have not heard from?
Yeah, I guess.
I think this, this, we'll get back to you. Person right here with the flowered shirt, your name?
Okay, my name's Paula Pierceall. I live on Fairfield Pond.
Okay, Ms. Pierceall, go ahead.
Okay, Masa Steck has said on a tour recently at Georgia Mountain that only one bat was killed. Isn't it true that the bat study protocol is that one bat kills, kills means that a multiple of that number was actually killed? What is the multiplier?
Would you like to yield the remainder of your time to have your, your question answered? Or would you like to quit it?
Well, you had said that only one bat was killed in a period of time, like a year or so. And that was kind of confusing because I don't believe that's exactly true.
Yeah, no, it, for this year, for this year, it was from July 1st through August 1st. Because it was focused on small-footed bats, which is a listed species.
Is it true that Green Mountain had paid a penalty for, for that bat colony at one time? You heard that?
I don't know what Green Mountain paid.
Oh, I think it was a Lowell project, actually. Did they pay a penalty?
I don't know what they paid.
Okay, let's yield the floor back to Ms. Pierceall. Do you have other remarks you'd like to make or other questions?
Well, I'm concerned about the habitat. I'm concerned about all the things everybody else has said, our health, what it looks like. And I just, the main thing is, why are we in such a rush? You say we need the technology, but we're, we're hearing that we don't need it right now. Why not take our time and make sure you're, you're holding off? Why not hold off and let's see what's going to happen? Technology changes by a blink of an eye. And why do we need to destroy our mountains when there could be something so much better? And it won't affect the neighbors or the pond people or anybody. Why do we need to do that? We have power now. And we have our Green Mountain State now. Why change something that isn't a necessity? It's not an earth-shattering necessity now. I could see if it were, we'd have to sacrifice, but we're sacrificing people, people that live right next door. Are we expendable to that? I don't understand that. It seems like our views are not being paid attention to. And I'm hoping that the Fairfield Select Board will, will concur with all of these views. It's all I have to say.
Gentleman with the blue sweater, Fairfield resident?
Fairfield Pond.
All right, and your name?
Greg Pierce.
Mr. Pierce, go ahead.
This is for the slight board. You gentlemen have a town meeting each year and you decide what goes on in your town. And legislators have taken away the prerogative that you should have to explore the question of whether such a project as Travis is proposing should ever go forward. You should have had an opportunity at a town meeting to hear all of the citizens of Fairfield speak to the question of whether they want that wind project next door to them. I ask you to communicate with your legislators and ask them to rewrite the legislation on renewable power to factor in the towns and allow the towns to hold town meetings so citizens, not three, not three appointees can decide whether or not we have those kind of projects that destroy pristine bridge lines.
Mr. Pierce, thank you for expressing your views. A person in a gray shirt, your name?
I'm Greg Hunter, I'm Fairfield resident.
Go ahead, Mr. Hunter.
I don't live near the proposed area. I do teach physics and math at BFA. And just on decibel level, little, my understanding is that a jet plane taking off, if you're 100 yards away from it, the decibel levels are about 150, 140. And a whisper, that you may not hear me from across the room, that's a decibel about 25 decibels. It's not a linear scale, it's a logarithmic scale. And so all the decibel information is worthless unless you have a distance away from the object. So I've heard someone quote some 109 or 106 or one turbine GE, I believe. It depends how far away from the turbine are you. And so I, I, I think whenever you get a decibel reading, just get a number. You need to have it in context. Number two, I'd like to see detailed analysis of, Georgia Mountains happened enough, what's happened to property values? I think that would be a very good acid test of what does it do to the neighbors living around or near it or, or even from line of sight. So I think it'd be wonderful to have, and I, and again, it's all in context. You need to compare land values of very similar property to other places in Georgia and see what's happened, or Milton. See what other wind mountains have done, wind power products have done for land values. I think that would be a very telling test of how it impacts the area. And I'd love to see a written data sheet that would explain if land values aren't affected or if they are. And, uh, thank you.
Mr. Hunter. Next person. Listen to glasses.
I'm Kathy Clarkson, I'm on Fairfield Pond.
Go ahead.
Um, the turbines, the closest turbine to our home would be two miles. And you think, well, two miles, not that big of a deal. Well, half of that is over water. And I'd like to know, um, what does that do to me? Because there's no trees trying to block sound. I've got a half a mile, uh, one mile of some trees. And then I have a half, another mile of water. And I'd like to know what that'll do to us for sound.
Would you like to yield a remainder of your time to have your question answered?
Yes, please.
Or would?
Yes, please.
So that took about 30 seconds. You have 2:30 to yield. And the wind project, can you address that question?
And we are down, we've been told we are most of the time, we are downwind of this. Downwind. We're going to hear most of the time if we're downwind. Is that correct? Is that correct? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we're downwind, two miles, one mile over water.
Yeah. And our sound consultants have studied that with respect to wind speeds, wind directions, all, all of the new radical conditions, including ground cover and the fact that part of the distance is over water. And the result so far is we have been told that is the fact you're over water doesn't increase the sound level.
Do you believe that? Sir, do you believe that?
All right, do you give this a mark to the Swanton Wind Project? Is there any response?
I think you might go back to school.
Okay, we're going to yield. All right, you're now, we have, you have 30 seconds left to address the remainder of the question or you can yield the time back.
So the sound doesn't amplify over water, okay? And then the other point that the sound consultants made to us, to help us to understand the situation was that someone had made the example of, you know, you can hear people talking across the pond. And when, when is that, what are the conditions when that occurs? The conditions when that occurs is that it's very cold.
No.
Right? That's not true.
No. It depends upon from the direction that the wind's coming from and where you are relative, where you are on the pond.
Actually, Ken Kaliski, your sound guy, and I'm, I'm speaking.
She's speaking for me.
Um, told us at your wind event, if you live a mile and a half away and you have a half a mile of water in between you, deduct that half mile. And it'll be like you're a mile away instead of a mile and a half.
Right, come on.
So.
So we'll all be miles.
That's huge.
So let's, in order to keep this moving, do you have any, any place that you publish information or anything that's in a public clearinghouse or availability on sound that could be readily sent out to express this particular question?
Yes, well, so the tricky, the tricky thing is that the Swanton, town of Swanton has a website that now the town of Fairfield has linked to. There are a number of things missing from that. I sent them earlier in the week to the town of Swanton. I can't control whether those are posted, but they've also been sent to the select board and accounts that have taken, we, those are public.
Is it also, is it also, why did I not answer? I'm sorry.
We can put it on our website as well, swantonwind.com.
Okay, so is there a particular area in that prevention that's labeled sound or wind resources? Okay.
What's the?
So. We have to go on the website.
They, they talk, but they don't say anything.
We're going to move on to the, the next person. We have to wrap up the opinion section very shortly. We have time for two more. Does anyone else like to speak? Mr. Pierce, we'll return to you from someone who hasn't.
Right here on the front.
I'm sorry, person with the green sweater, your name?
Diane.
Go ahead, Shuck.
I have my cell phone in the car. A lot of the information that we hear about the long-term impact seem to come from the project managers themselves, like from Lowell, Sheffield or Georgia Mountain. Are there any independent studies done on wildlife effects or sound, water quality issues? Or are they just done by the government who is, who is a project or? Are they just done by the government who is managing this project or from the developers themselves?
Would you like to yield the remainder of your time to get an answer to this question? Okay, so you have, that was 30 seconds, you have two and a half minutes to address studies regarding to wildlife.
Well, also, water. So, the government agency, the Agency of Natural Resources, which is staffed by professionals who work for you, the taxpayers, have studied these independently from the developers. There's a study, for example, going on right now on Georgia Mountain, excuse me, Lowell Mountain, that is showing that bears are denning in the area of the wind turbines and successfully denning in the area of the wind turbines. The water quality studies I referenced before that show not only no increases in pollution, but also healthy communities of aquatic wildlife. Those are done by the Agency of Natural Resources, taxpayer-funded, civil service, career employees, scientists who've worked there for Republican administrations and Democratic administrations. These are the same scientists who worked there during Douglas, who was not as supportive of renewable energy, has worked for Shumlin, who's been more supportive. And they have to, those same experts are the ones that will have to review the project. We don't talk directly to the secretary. The, they, the scientists who've worked at the agency, many of them for decades, they have to go to the project site, they have to look at everything that the consultants that are hired by the developers say, and they have to make their own independent judgment about whether that is accurate or not. And then the Public Service Board has to swear them out under oath, the people that have worked there for decades through all sorts of administrations. And they have to give testimony about whether they think there will be the types of impacts that folks are concerned about, or whether the, the project will be able to meet the standards that have been established by the state to protect the environment, to protect water quality, to protect public health. That's, I mean, when people swear under oath and they've worked for the government for that whole time, you know, they know that they're swearing under oath under the laws of perjury.
30 minutes is in?
That's, that's your study? There have also been, across the, I mean, wind turbines are not new to Vermont. Okay, there have been independent scientific studies, and we have those available as well of wind turbines across the country.
Okay. One last, time for one last one. Mr. Brandon?
Yes, I'm Rusty Brandon, I own some land over in Berry Road, that kind of area. Uh, my biggest thing, I guess, for the board going forward would be to, um, I know you don't control this, this is just one of those deals where we all have to react to things going on around us. And, uh, the health becomes an issue to me, I'm thinking of building up that way, so. I may or may not, depending on what's found out, and I'm trying to educate myself as well. So I don't know if it's good, bad, or indifferent at this point, but I would encourage the board to look into it, continue to look into it as much as they can to figure out, first of all, the health issues for people, and then what it would mean to the environment and the folks, you know, that are supported in that area. Uh, there's, it's, it's new out there. My understanding is, and I'm new to this, trying to figure it out, but we're not in a position right now where we need energy tomorrow. So I don't think that, you know, moving too fast is the right thing to do, and again, it's not really up to the board to decide how quickly this is gonna be or not be. In fact, I don't think you folks have really any say at all, since it's through the Swanton folks. And I don't even know how much say the Swanton folks have in it, to be honest with you. So, uh, but I do think that it's important that we voice our opinion and that we try and encourage those of power to look into the benefits and the risks and kind of go that route as to, you know, how much benefit do we get from the project? And what are, what's the cost of it in terms of help to ourselves and to the environment and, uh, the people around it? So, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Let's hear from Mr. Parks also.
Okay. First we had a procedural question, and then with your, Mr. Parks.
When you filed your permit application, did a complete copy of that be up on your Swanton Wind site? So that people can see everything that the Public Service Board is willing to see?
All right, really quick, can you answer that one? So where will it be?
On the website?
There's a section called the permit.
Uh, Mr. Parks, go ahead.
Thank you, there's nothing like the titty vote.
You waited so long.
Really, my, my, my comments that I wanted to make would be directed to the select board. I just wanted to identify and maybe just refresh for anybody who, for you folks, in case you haven't seen it all or read it all, and for anybody else who's in the room who may not be aware. This package of information that I have in front of me is essentially the information that backs up the different formal positions that different entities have taken about this project. For, for instance, the letter from the Town of Swanton to Governor Shumlin indicating their opposition. That's a particular piece of information that I think the Fairfield Select Board should be aware of and evaluate when they make their decision as well, as to, you know, what other, what the Town of Swanton's position is. In here is a letter from the House and Senate Representatives written by Representative Brian Savage, who represents Franklin County, uh, to the governor, commissioner of health, commissioner of the Department of Public Service, and the chair of the Public Service Board. And it requests that the appropriate state agencies take action to address all of the serious health concerns associated with, with, uh, turbines and industrial wind. A letter from Representatives Brannigan Strong, Senator Starr, Benning Rogers, to Governor Shumlin, the PSB Chairman Jim Bolt, PSD Commissioner, and Harry Chen, the Health Commissioner. It states that their constituents living around Sheffield, Lowell, Georgia, and Fairfax have repeatedly filed complaints with the state agencies about noise pollution emanating from the wind turbines in the neighborhood and that those complaints have not been responded to. Historical real information, not some model, but real data, real information, real people. You know, these are reports about sleep disruption, nausea, dizziness, et cetera, et cetera. For some of these people, it's gone on for three years with no meaningful response. They request that the appropriate state agencies take the wind turbine noise pollution complaints, health and safety concerns seriously and take action to address these in a timely manner. They're not fake, people aren't calling up to say, to make things up. Frankly, they'd rather be in bed sleeping, but they can't. Uh, the Town of Swanton letter to the Public Service Board stating, you know, their, their position. Also, there's another, there's one in here of the Northeast Vermont Development Association, NVDA, their position on industrial wind power after experiencing the effects of hosting two projects in Sheffield and Lowell and the wind study they conducted. Their position, this again, real information, people who are living here. Their position is that no further development of industrial-scale wind turbines should take place in the Northeast Kingdom. You can read the full study on their website, NVDA.net. Again, this isn't a model, this is real. Real people who have lived it, regardless of what somebody's study might have told them before it went in. Uh, there's a letter from the Public Service Department to the Public Service Board, a motion to dismiss or in the alternative request for hearing in reference to Swanton Wind. A full statement can be found on their, on the Public Service Board's website. Again, that, the backup information is in this package. A letter previously mentioned, a letter from Green Mountain, from GMPC, Burlington Electric, Vermont Public Power Supply Authority, supporting, supporting the Public Service Board's motion to dismiss the power purchase agreement that Swanton Wind asked for. The question asked earlier, where will the wind, where will the power go? It's not going, it's, it's not gonna be in Vermont folks. And there's a few more items.
I only have 30 seconds, 20 seconds. 20 seconds. We've gone over our time. 10 seconds. I do understand there was a request from Mr. Colley to yield 15 seconds, the remainder of his time for the select board, you would like to answer this question with regard to the benefit for Fairfield residents or Fairfield taxpayers. Do you have, is there any response to select board, you may anticipate some change?
Should I verify what I was, what I said, right?
Did I summarize that correctly?
Well, I just wanna make sure that the rest of the people in Fairfield that aren't around here realize that their taxes are gonna go up because these other, these 50 homes in Fairfield that are affected are gonna have lower tax value on their house.
Unless we happen to cut spending, which we've never done. I think we stated at the meeting in Swanton, yeah, if the value of your homes go down, then the tax rate goes up. We need, we need the same amount of money, regardless of, of what, we need the same amount of roads to plow and children to go to school and.
True.
I mean, the main reason to have this was to hear a lot of people in Fairfield tell us what they felt. And that's, that's why we've pretty much restricted it as much as possible to have people in town tell us their opinions. At this point, we, we've sent one letter, we agree with Towns One that this should be input from local communities, not just the Public Service Board in there. And we haven't agreed with them on that, and we have sent a letter in support of their position. That's the only thing we've done so far.
Um, and with that, we're gonna conclude this segment of the select board meeting having to deal with the wind project. The select board needs to move on with its regularly scheduled meeting. So we appreciate you all, you can say this is an open meeting, but the select board needs to move on.